I'd like to call somebody at this joint meeting. And begin with a roll call.
Ms. Oceander. Mr. Hall.
Here.
Birch. Birch.
Here. That's our Birch.
Ms. Drummond. Here. Mr. Flynn.
Present.
Ms. Ray Jackson.
Honored to be here.
Mr. Horniman.
He will be late for his coming.
Okay, Ms. Johnston.
Here.
Mr. Starr.
Here.
Mr. Trainey.
Here.
Mr. Trombley.
Here.
We have a forum for the Assembly. Will you do it now? Do you want us to do the roll call?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Ms. Jess is on her way. Ms. Mackey. Here. Mr. Friedman.
Here.
Mr. Higgins.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
She's in Juneau.
Oh, okay. Ms. Plunkett. Here. Mr. Smith.
Same.
We have a forum of the School Board as well. Good. You want to lead the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some minutes before us. Move that sap. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection to accept the minutes? Seeing none, those minutes are accepted as presented, thank you. How's the agenda look? Is everybody all right with it? Carol did inform me that Gretchen was going to head off on the fiscal policies discussion, but she should be in momentarily, and so I'd like to, I guess, go ahead with the agenda as presented unless there's objections. Seeing no objection then, we'll continue with the agenda as presented. Chris.
I haven't touched on the minutes yet, but regarding the cost of security officers, I don't know if that's the issue. Okay, great. I don't know if it needs to be an agenda item or follow-up or anything.
Yes, I remember you asked for that. I've just been informed the mayor's not going to be able to make this meeting. All right. Carol, do you want to lead off on the first thing then?
Sure. And certainly Chad and Marie have worked very closely with our budget committee, the board members. Unfortunately, Crystal is in Juneau, so she was actively participating in this discussion, as were others. But this, in the back of this memo, fiscal policies, the board directed us, and we think it's a really good start on the, it's Exhibit 2.
Hold on a second. Are you talking about the ordinance? So we have that in front of us?
We had it when we got over there.
Hold on.
There's extra copies.
I think we're going to need the extra. I brought my big budget book, but I didn't bring it.
It's attached to the A.O., Carol.
The whole one with me.
Yes.
Amanda's going to pass it over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's get one here. So, okay. Sorry for the hesitation. That's okay. No, I'm just, this is what I'm talking about.
Oh, I see.
It's the appendix to Exhibit 2.
Got it.
This, the board directed us to focus the first year on these fiscal policies and really try to identify what are the policies and drivers, if you will, of our budget development process. And so that's what this document focuses on, and I hope, I know some of you have had the opportunity to really read through it, and she really wanted to talk about that. But you can see the, oh, good. Just knew I was talking.
My parking car ran out.
We just started, and I was just starting.
You know, while we're talking about parking karma, I was thinking, we do have these meetings here, and they have the things as far as Assembly members, and we should be able to do something.
In past life, I certainly remember receiving parking tickets from the Assembly office so that you guys could park at the garage. And that doesn't exist anymore. All right, we can go work on that.
That would be very nice.
Sorry.
So I had just started. We passed this out because some of them, and I was so on the fiscal policy, so I'll turn it back to you.
Hi, my apologies, I try not to read late, and that just didn't happen today. So in front of you are fiscal policies as passed by the board. This is what the board deems as really the first and key component to true fiscal planning, which is at the core, what are the drivers, what are the fiscal policies of your budget, not just in one year, but going forward. You'll see on page 1, kind of, the laying out of the four steps that I see in, and it's not just me, that the board sees in fiscal planning. And the first is, what are the fiscal policies? How do you make your decisions around your finances? The next are, what are the salient cost drivers? Not just, you know, what are things going to project in the future, and how many people and all that that goes to it, but it really is, what are those underlying costs that really drive your budget? And then you take those costs and you say, what are the risks around those, and what are the probabilities of those future costs? Because what you want to do is start with the big ones, and the biggest risk, and focus on then, how do you augment, change your practices and your fiscal policies to reduce your cost risk? All of that said, as folks know from our strategic initiatives, our fiscal planning is a process, it's a process that we didn't get as far as I wanted in the last 10 months, I'll be honest with you, and I own that as Chair. But we did get to at least what I think is the core, which is verbalizing and being very transparent to the public, how we made financial decisions and what those practices are. So if you go through the document, either folks read it ahead of time or they skim through it, what we tried to do is put it in some order that would make logic, at least made logic to the board, which around, kind of, the key fiscal policies, the revenue policies, expenditure policies, and cost savings and operational efficiencies. I would be remiss to say that everything is in here. I know we missed things, and what I hope the public and the Assembly does, and Mr. Starr and I met yesterday, and he brought something up, and I was like, you know, that really needs to be in a fiscal policy, with around using bond funds when that, kind of, savings, when we haven't expended everything on a bond, and we have excess revenue from the bond that's already sold. What do we do with that? And that's a great thing to put into fiscal policy. So these are going to change and augment over time, they are meant to. And every board may look at them differently. They may look at class size differently, they may look at different policies. But the focus is to have some standard core of fiscal policies that are very transparent to the public, and then to provide those to you not only at this time, but our goal is that we review these and we decide on these before our budget process starts. This year, just like any time you make significant change, it kind of went side by side. Instead of the board sitting down in July, August, September timeframe and saying, what are going to be the fiscal policies of the next budget and the future projections are going to be based on? So I'm not going to go through these specifically. I do a couple ones that I want to make sure that folks know that are in there, that are important to the board and that have come up in past conversations. One of them is a concerted effort on sharing and consolidating services, and that's stated in here, and it was important for the board to both pull out examples and to state those. In the future, I hope we can then have those projects and model them out and decide which ones may or may not work for both sides. And the other is outsourcing, that we verbalize in here, a process to consider outsourcing of services, because I know those two have come up in the past in our conversations. So with that, and then in the back, for those of you who haven't seen, is kind of, for the first time, the district really spelling out our core values and beliefs and our performance measure. We expect not only when we align this for this budget, but future budgets, to focus on where we've said the district needs to go. And those are really articulated in the back and specifically in the performance measures, of what performance do we expect out of the district? So with that, I guess, are there any questions, Madam Chair?
Yeah, this is more of a statement than a question. And as you know, as I emailed both you and Ms. Plunkett, I really appreciated these two packets together this year and read them, and appreciated your first effort at this, because I think it's exceptional. One of the reasons is, if you combine the two, you'll see with the budgetary expenditures increases, what's driving the increases. And you see contractual increases that are about 60% of your drivers. And then when you compare this with what you already had in there, and then you compare it with the dashboards that you're looking at, I think then we can have a really respectful conversation. And I'm glad to see the sharing, as I said, mentioned to both you and the Chair of the Assembly, I feel that we're at the point that when you talk about shared services, we don't, we're still peace feeling, we're still looking at it as a data center, or we're looking at it as shared with the ground or whatever. And I feel we really need to take documents like this and start talking about shared services in a way that we bring it to a policy level. And I still hope that we have a group between the board and the Assembly where we look at the policy of shared services, and so a more global conversation, particularly when we have a new superintendent. But anyways, long and short of it, I really appreciated both these documents this year. I thought it was a good start.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just focused in on the executive line strategies, and it's made me remember, yesterday I got a copy, like everybody else did, of the audit that was done on the school district purchasing department, and I read the executive summary, but I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing. But just reading the executive summary, I would really like, as Chair of the Municipal Audit Committee, to have a joint Municipal Audit Committee with the School District Audit Committee, I believe you have one, and talk about that, not let it just go by the wayside, but it's pretty significant based on the executive summary, and I really like to offline set up a meeting with our Audit Committee and the School District Audit Committee to go over the findings and recommendations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Pat, do you want to say anything as Chair of the Audit Committee on that audit?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to say anything as Chair of the Audit Committee regarding that audit?
I'm sorry, which audit did you make?
The audit that, our internal audit that I'm purchasing. And the only thing you have to respond is, I want to get together with the Municipal Audit Committee and the School District Audit Committee to talk about it.
Okay. We were impressed. It worked out extremely well. I've got to tell you, we see that as going forward in the future and developing a relationship there, that the municipality's audit process that they did on purchasing was really exceptional. I mean, we were very, very pleased with it. Gave us some findings to work on, it wasn't alarming or anything, but it gave us findings and gave us a lot of confidence, that it was extremely well done. And we can see it working in a number of ways. We have a number of annual reviews, such as the student activity piece and all that. Having that continuity and having that type of relationship where we pay for an employee, let's say, in internal audit, and they can provide the oversight, actually has a great deal of benefits, I think, to us, and we would like to see that kind of relationship work out. It really was, it was an exceptional.
So the question is, would you like to have a joint Audit Committee meeting with the Municipal Audit Committee and your Audit Committee to talk about it?
Sure. I would welcome that.
Okay, well said. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Trombley.
Question would be for Ms. Jess. In 2010, 2011, so last year, you, the school district impacted the fund balance about 1.9 million, this year 5.2, next year projecting $7 million. And I don't have an issue with that, because the municipality is doing it too, just to fund general government. But when it comes, when it comes to fiscal policy, and that's one of the questions regards to, is if you get a lump sum from the state, now I know that on page in this document, which is labeled minus 1 from our last meeting, on page 7, you've already identified that if you do get additional funding, you're going to spend that towards class sizes, elementary, it's on page 7, you can take a look at it. And I understand, class size, I'm sorry.
I was just trying to hear what you're talking.
And I understand class sizes is very important, and that was in one of the packets that I've read, lower class sizes are important. And I'm just curious, do you think it would be wise to establish some type of fiscal policy that when you do receive one-time funding, that if you are dipping into your general, if you are dipping into fund balance to fund general government, basically general government, that some of that money be spent back into, some of the money that you get from a one-time funding, like we did last year with the 13 million, some of it should be put back into the general fund? Would you agree with that?
It's a great, it's a great question, and I appreciate you pointing it out. And this is always, as the Chair of the Assembly knows, the interesting balance on the School Boards, because the budget memo is from the administration. And although I appreciate it, the what if ASD receives additional funding are going to be their recommendations to the board. The board hasn't had the conversation yet, and of course, the interesting thing with ours is we have a new board. When we finalize our budget in June, then we make our budget ahead of time. So these are recommendations they'll make, they are all, I don't see recommendations that aren't one-time expenditures. So to me, I would go to the one-time funds on page 4, the fiscal policies, where we specifically state that unless it can be shown that we're going to have a true impact on our education for the following year, one-time funds should be spent on one-time funds. The debate sometimes, typically on class sizes, if we can reduce, even with one-time funds, classes for next year, we think that has an impact, even if we can't do it the following year. That's always a very robust debate on, at the School Board level, but some folks believe it and some folks don't. But I would agree with you, and depending on where the legislature falls, for example, we ended up reducing, I don't think, oh, Jane is here, the technology refresh significantly in the budget. For me, that's one of the things we're going to have to look at if we get one-time funds. And there's other things, like the math curriculum implementation. So I think you'll see that debate play out, depending on how those funds go. But for me, we start with the policy and take that in concert with the administration's recommendation, which we're seeing on that page.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just say one thing on that, if I could? These are truly things that were discussed during the budget hearings, and when we wrote the memo, we were supporting, and still are, Senate Bill 171, which was the three-year, which was discussed over three years of increases. Now, after Governor came out after all this was completed, but we don't disagree at all. These were strictly things that came out of our input from the public and what we think are important to be discussed, but as she said, this is strictly just at this point, waiting to see what happens.
I understand. My other question is, last year, you were about 12, roughly 12 million dollars, you came in 12 million dollars under budget, which I congratulate for, and it's under, again, it's on page 176, I can stand out. When I looked at the CAFER, it showed that you took 9 million dollars and it went towards, I'm sorry, it would be under the AM 122-2012. Well, actually, no, and it's not this, it's what we got in the package, I'm sorry, we should be identifying markers.
Well, that's true.
It would be, yeah, AO 2012-25 is what it is. So back to the question is, of that 12 million dollars, when I looked at the CAFER from last year, roughly 9 million dollars was transferred to the capital budget.
The construction fund? Okay.
Page 176 of AO 2012-25. That's the page number for our entire packet, so on a different page number rather, that'd be helpful.
But I can actually know what question you're asking.
It's on the attachments, and it's page number 4, the attachments is a spreadsheet with the out years, yeah, let's start. So it says page number 4 at the bottom of the current packet.
Got it.
Right here. I've got a bull through mine, so what you have is, I just, our packet from last meeting, but it's the same information. I think they got it. Everybody good? Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So anyways, the CAFER said 9 million, 9 went to capital, and how much of that 9 million went to the transfer for the IT department for the master? Is there a schedule?
For the IT department?
Or not IT department, but the, yeah, the data center.
The data center, the data center.
1.8 million.
Of the 9.
No, it's not, no, of the 9 million, is the 9 million the construction fund?
7 million went to the construction fund, and 1.8 million went to the funding.
So, but not of the 9, I mean, the 9 million that went into the capital?
Correct. That's the total of the 9 million that went to the capital.
So 7 million, we set up a new fund, which is a construction fund. I'm hoping if we can ever get the legislature to not force us to bond for maintenance, that we start, that's the fund that kind of pays ongoing for maintenance, but it was idea of Ms. Plunkett's put in a construction fund for construction, and then the rest of it went, 1.8 went to the data center.
All right, and just one more question. The assumption for next year is that, and again, this is on the same page, we were talking about it, when I saw it on the Noxus Plus, is that, and I understand that the formulation is based on student population, the state allocation. Do you think it's actually realistic that the state's going to come in 10 million dollars last year in state funding? That's what's projected, I just, realistically, I can't see that. And that's what's projected for next year?
Yeah, and my apologies, and Mr. Starr and I had a robust conversation.
We're going to have more of it.
And we're going to have more of it, too. I wish these projections weren't in here, because I don't think they tell the real story of the district, because they don't have any of what's going to happen on the expenditure side, or the cost side of fiscal planning. They kind of project it out based on everything in status quo, including our funding, and I don't think that really, I don't, I think it's our opportunity for improvement on transparency of what we think's going to happen in the future. As far as state funding goes...
It's year to year, and I understand that.
It's year to year, I don't know what's going to happen this year, I don't think I have any influence, I've never thought I had any influence what's going to happen this year or in the future years. That's, you know, that gets played out in, you know.
And that's one of the reasons I noticed that the budget is smaller, projected to be smaller next year than it is in the current year, is because there's obviously, not to say you haven't made efficiencies, that's good, and I appreciate that. I just, I'd like to, I just don't see that as happening. And that's not your guys' fault, I just wanted to have that conversation with you.
It's partly, I think, we need to provide better information to have the conversation about what the future expenses and the revenue looks like and what those cost drivers are. And that's the goal of our fiscal plan. I don't think we got here overnight, we're not going to get out of it overnight. But you're right, I think that's what has to happen so we can have a true conversation.
Okay, that's all, I appreciate it.
Mr. Starr.
Well, Gretchen's right, and a couple of the conversations, and I think the topic is the fiscal policy statements in front of us, and I would make one comment, is I hope it's not a cemented product every year, use the same format, because I suspect that there will be issues that drop off as they get addressed, or new flavors of the year, municipal bond market softening, or debt service issues relating to cost of money, you know, so I would want the document as a policy statement to be fluid. But as I said last year, at the budget review process, on the requirement to have the fiscal plan, have quantified in it, have some numbers in it, I'm not going to back off of that, because I believe that that's the intent of the charter language. You may, as a policy statement, I've read some of the minutes speak on your meetings, you don't feel bound to the dollars, perhaps, as our charter language specifies on the MOA side, you will speak to the dollars as it relates to how you're going to fund your capital. We have that, we have a plan on our website now that shows us that roadmap, if you will. And I'm going to press forward in the value of the decision-making as it is to this body, this combined body. It's 2008, we hit the taxpayers for 178 million dollars. Now we're hitting for 199 million dollars. We didn't have a fiscal plan presented in any form of a policy statement from the school district back then, aside from what shows up in this budget, particularly the page that Adam is referring to, this VIIV, if that's in real numerals, it's in the book, and to say that it shouldn't be in the book, I think is a misstatement as well. We need to keep our eye on that, not just the tax numbers as well, but the expectation of fundings. And what I would hope is that you take that around and you become more proactive with it, not embarrassed that it's going up, or not a driving goal that you're trying to contain it, but to have a realistic conversation about what you can and can't do, partly constrained by what the taxpayers, you know, yell at us for, but the validity of the document, the numbers in it, quantifiable, is what the fiscal policy statement backed up by trends, by forecasts, by future decision-making elements. It's got to be, and I'm tremendously let down with the fact that you couldn't get to the next level and put numbers with it. It's got to be simple for the decision-makers, not only us now, but a roadmap for those that take over from us. How much money does it take to reduce class sizes by one? Do I have to ask that question every year, or do we start to make it a goal? How much would a shared service program provide to us in a benefit package? And again, it's that model that I will hold firm from fiscal planning tools, because whether you want that V1IV in the book or not, it shows a 20 million dollar deficit next year, or a shortfall between expenditures and revenues. It also sets the expectation up that we're not going to raise taxes, it sets the expectation up that debt service is going to come down. If none of it's true, great, take it out of the budget book. But then you're wiping your brow at the end of every budget cycle going, we made it this year. I want to reverse that trend, it's got to be a little bit more proactive than that. Maybe I'm living in the fallacy world, that those conversations, you know, don't occur that way. But the funding levels that we support, the 199 million, let's have them, and let's see them as we go. I'm going to emphasize the 20 million dollar deficit next year, I'm going to emphasize the fact that you're planning on flat taxes next year, and that you're decreasing your debt service. I, I'm trying to be nice here, but it's the wrong expectation. How do we go out and promote a bond package itself for election right now, with the fact that it's not even dialed into your expenses for next year? You don't say that debt service is going to go up, in fact, you say it's going to go down. Therefore, that bond's not going to pass? That's the wrong expectation. So I'll keep it up, I thought we had the conversation on the real perspective last year, the illustration that your capital plan didn't match the fiscal plan in your budget book, didn't support that, it's a trifecta document, and the policies are wonderful and great, I hope they're fluid, but they've got to have numbers with them. And, you know, we talked for two hours yesterday on the value of it. So there we are, thank you.
Chair, can I just, if you want to respond?
If I could, because I really appreciate, appreciate the comment. First of all, I don't want to leave it that they shouldn't be in the book, and they shouldn't be part of our policies. They should. What I don't, what I don't want in the book is the fallacy of what's in there now, exactly of all the things you said, because it doesn't provide, I think, the picture and the robustness. And I take accountability for the fact we didn't get there. So what bothers me is that it's not the right conversation. The dollar amount, once you do the modeling, may be that dollar amount, but I couldn't tell you that right now, and I'm disappointed that we can't. The goal of the board is to have that, not because the Assembly asked for it, and publicly not in the format that the Assembly asked for it, but towards the same goal. And honestly, in a more robust manner, we have to understand what's driving our costs. It's not contract costs, it's what makes it so we have to have so many people. I mean, we have this conversation with Higgins, and I have this conversation all the time about special ed. And if we could get on the front end and not have kids fall two years behind, so they're automatically put into special ed, what savings we could do. And those are the...
And those are the conversations we need to have as a board, we need to have in the community. And so there is, as disappointed as you are, you are not more disappointed than me. And so I appreciate your comments and I, and I still feel that this board is aligned with the same vision. And again, not, we have a difference. We believe the charter says, show you the policies. And every year, the board's going to decide what they give you. But that doesn't mean that this board does not believe in fiscal planning and isn't going down that road. And so I hope that we can kind of marry that all up, to be honest.
Can I just, we, or I emphasize strongly that the deficit number that was in the out years in last year's budget was $106 million. We don't seem to be off that target. And again, that's, that's not a target that I'm proud of saying we're going to go down unless I can say this is how it handles education. Class sizes go down, we do this with our teacher salaries, we increase that. It's gotta be that. And you just said it, you're striving for it, but the idea that it's not, I might say it's not easy to put together, but it's very important to put it together. Otherwise, it's a one-year think and you don't want this body, the assembly body, in a one-year think mode. I don't believe you do. That's, that's just not prudent for me. So I'll, I'll keep it up because I'm not, I think it's a very valuable tool in the high market.
If it's not directly on this question, there's three people waiting.
Oh, well.
Is it directly on this?
I was just going to say the, in response, I agree with this conversation. I think it's a very good conversation. And I feel the accountability there also looking back here are these dashboards, which are changing that conversation. No, but, I mean, maybe, maybe not. I mean, but if these dashboards don't show improvement, then we're all going to be not passing the red face pass.
Good for you. We do, as a board, spend a lot of time talking about costs because that's something that we are, we can control and are required to control. My frustration with the idea of fiscal planning is that we can plan for costs all we want, but we have no control over our revenue. We have no idea how much money this body will appropriate for the out years for the school district. We have no idea how much the legislature will appropriate for this coming year for the school district. We can guess. Fairbanks did that once, they guessed they were going to get a $12 million increase, they got a $6 million increase and they were scrambling to balance their budget. It's, it is, it is literally impossible, I think, to make a fiscal plan when you have no control over revenue. We don't, it's entirely a fiscal, a political decision year by year. Nobody's going to tell us we're going to get what we're going to get here for, on this body, I don't think. I mean, if you would, we could start doing that. If you said, yes, we're going to go to the cap or we're going to go, you know, this now, this year, that's what we did for many years, we were able to assume that. Now we're assuming flat funding because that's what we've been told by the assembly to assume. I, you know, it's, it is, it is what we do because it's the nature of the political process and the dependent nature of a school district. I think, you know, we, the fiscal policies are great. I don't think there's a lot new in them, there's a few new ones, but they've all been either in somewhere in the budget memo or somewhere in our big budget book, but you'd have to really search for them to find them. And it's great to have them in one document. And that will drive our budget, but I can't see anybody doing anything other than one year budgeting as long as we're told by both the state and the assembly that our revenues will only be determined one year at a time.
That's fine.
Thank you, Matt Scher. I think all of us have received a couple of emails about expressing concerns about the reduction of elementary school counselors. Six, the, here's six positions are being eliminated with both budget. And, you know, just to make your decision, they're not going to second guess that. I just, my only question is, based on the criteria that you've laid out for how you would treat one-time money, these positions would not be eligible for reinstatement using those dollars, correct?
Unless the board thought that we could really make a difference in what happens on the ground level in that year. So that's where the conversation will locate.
Okay. It may be part of the conversation, but it's perhaps unlikely. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah. It's going to be a new board.
Right, yeah, who knows? Yeah, what I ask is, yes.
But, but I think, you know, I think class size is the easier one when you get into some of these other services. I think you really have to look at what impact, can you really have the, a significant impact on children in that one year if that's going to go away the following year? So I think that's a conversation in the future, board.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, if you want to, okay. Mr. Hall?
Yeah, a bit of response to, to Mr. Freeman. I absolutely understand what, you know, what he's saying, but I hope everybody's picking up on what Mr. Starr is saying as well. If you're building a six-year fiscal plan, knowing what your cost increases are going to be and et cetera, regardless of what you anticipate the funding is, the reality is, if we continue education at the level that we're doing it this year, next year it's going to cost this, which gives us the ability as, as a body to take a look at it and understand why increases are needed or what's going on inside of education. Literally, what Mr. Starr is asking for is a plan that gives us the ability to help you in regards to funding of a budget. And I want to be, you know, I want to be clear, I've never been involved in a conversation with the assembly about our task is to do flat line funding for education. If that conversation's ever occurred, I'm not aware of it. But I think what Mr. Starr points out is a very valid point, is if we're looking out and you're continuing to project it's going to be flat line, flat line, you're sort of foretelling your own future in regards to doing that. So, you know, he's encouraging you to give, you know, provide a secure fiscal plan so that you've got an idea of what is coming at you so we have a chance to make plans in regards to the same way. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's exactly what I heard him saying is we know that you can't do flat funding forever. I mean, there's a cost increase that occur every year. So we need to see that built into a budget so we've got anticipation of this year it was X, next year, if nothing extraordinary happens, you know, we're looking at this for an expense.
Any response?
Thank you. And I think we have tried to put those six-year projections out there and what they showed was a very large fiscal gap. And I at least felt very chastised for presenting that six-year plan and then being told that it presents a fiscal gap and you can't have a fiscal gap. And so what we said is we would be cutting services to, to make that zero. I don't consider that a plan particularly because we don't really know how much we will need to cut each year because we don't know what the funding will be. But we have projected our six-year expenses out before and we've given that to the assembly. And, and I think as Ms. Gess said, that's what we've been working on is to, to really figure out where, where the cost drivers are, not just project if we continue doing what we're doing today for six years, what will it cost? Because we know we're not going to continue doing what we're doing today for six years, but we are starting to make plans for what's going to change. And I really don't think we are that far off. I mean, I feel very frustrated based on some of the, some of the past discussions, which we can put aside and start fresh and, and just based on the uncertainty, especially from the state level. I mean, that's, that's where it's the hardest for me. But I really think we are on that track of giving you and mostly us, we need it as much as anybody, the kinds of, of long-range data that, that will be useful. But, you know, maybe it doesn't matter whether we call it a plan or a policy or projections because the bottom line is what are we spending money? What's driving the increases? Where can we, where can we make adjustments in that? Or maybe we don't need to make adjustments because the increases are justified by the educational outcomes, but we need to get that to you better.
Okay. There's a couple of people waiting, but Mr. Hall, did you want to respond on that? Mr. Starr, on that particular?
Yeah, specifically, I can just give you an example. I embrace the CT and E goal, I really do. Where's the amount of money that it's going to take us to fund that under the, under the policy or the plan? That's all I'm asking for. I can lobby with you to Faircliff and Stolz and the other ones that need to hear it. If I say, here's how that works, we're going to hit the high schools with this model, it's going to cost in today's dollars this. It, to me, is the, is the, what Mr. Hall was speaking for me on my behalf is it helps me market to you, market for you. And I can, I can approach it. It's not a, let's hold it flat at all costs or let's, let's keep driving it down, let's embrace what are the realistic policy goals and the mission statements of that education goal as it relates. And if you tell me that it's going to be, as we embrace CT and E, it's going to say that it's going to tax our budget five million dollars more every year, it's an easier argument for me to have, much more, an argument for increased funding both at Juno and at the assembly level. That's, that's the example. Thank you.
Mr. Higgins?
Well, I'll just comment that it's two o'clock today. We actually have a plan on the five-year crew technology committee focusing on that. But I just want to emphasize, the money is going to have to be after we design what we want to provide in each one of the schools before we can put three dollars to it. We've got to first reach a conclusion on how the feeder schools are going to breed into the high schools so that the plans are there, whether or not we've got the right diversity on crew technology depending upon being able to adequately manage it, to be able to staff it and to make sure it matches the student needs. And that's going to result in the kind of results we want for having kids career-ready with it. And so there's going to be a lot of, a lot of discussion in regards to that. But I think you're asking whether or not we can come out with a plan telling you what in five years or three years, if we have more money, what we'd be doing. I'm going to say I joined the board in 2008, crew technology wasn't the high priority it was for me. It's changing somewhat and I wouldn't want it to be limited on what was established three or four years before I got on the board on what we were doing. Last year, when we were dealing with cuts, we looked at opportunities to make changes that based upon results that we were getting. One of the things we did last year, even before we got the additional funds, was expanding the summer school for elementary because we saw some positive results coming out and we got that achievement gap and we're saying, wait a minute, we can deal with something at a younger age, we don't have to pass it on all the way up through high school, let's see if we can bring about some change. So even when we have cuts, we're looking at making changes on whether the budget's going to be increasing or decreasing. And when we see opportunities changing, we're going to change our priorities. And I think it's appropriate that we do that. It's, I think it's critical that we recognize that, I think Gretchen is right, you know, we're going to have a different board next year, we're going to have a different board the year after that, we always will. But I, I wouldn't want it to be unlimited based upon when I joined the board in 2008 because crew technology wasn't in that to the same degree it is today. And that was a high priority from then and it's still a high priority. But I look at the advantages of saying we need to do more in elementary to keep kids so that they're academically caught up, we don't pass them on every year and they're, and they're behind. What are we going to do? We're going to be shifting resources. If you want to know whether the budget's going to end up changing, I think it can be based upon results. Right now, we're getting test results back in for language, next year for all the schools, for every child, we're going to be getting test results. We'll be able to start evaluating where classrooms are being more successful than where they aren't. Putting dollars into that intervention where we are not being successful, that's nine months out of the year, but in the summer school, it's going to be a big issue. And it's going to shift our priorities some. It has to because we're going to have new information. And we've got to make sure that that primary nine-month school is being successful. And if it's not, then we've got to do some intervention. And we know we're going to have to deal with that. So I guess you're asking, you know, a long-term fiscal plan on what we're going to be spending it on and how we're going to be spending it. And I'm suggesting to you that hopefully we're going to be more fluid, just like you asked about the budget policies and all, when we get changes, we're going to see new opportunities, we're going to see new directions. Can we address them all at one time? No, we're going to have limited resources. Every organization and school district's no different, is going to have limited resources to deal with opportunities. But we're going to try to choose as many opportunities as we can. If we have less resources, we're going to take less opportunities. I like to have low, low classroom sizes. I definitely want to have the resources there to address the special needs issues with the kids and provide as much variety as possible. But we're going to be limited, every organization is, based upon some type of limited resources. And I don't know how to project forward, how our revenues are going to be there. We're not getting a commitment right now from the state saying, at least you can count three years in advance. We're not even being able to count down this year until they make a decision and we're not knowing until the mayor, the governor decides whether we're going to veto or not, what we're even going to get. And projecting it out two or three years is just impossible. So I'm missing something here, but I want our objectives and directives to be flexible somewhat based upon getting more information. I'm glad that we made changes and we expanded some programs last year, even with reduction in funds, because we said we have to redirect them. And I think we ought to be doing that on a regular basis.
Mr. Hall?
Yeah. And yes, my own response to Mr. Higgins on that basically comes back to what I was saying before. Our six-year plan can change every year as long as we got the justification for why we're doing it. All it's doing is giving us a roadmap so we've got an idea of where we're headed. But if we have, if we have some exceptional occurrence that creates an incredible amount of liability to the city that we have to respond to, then we're going to have to adapt our plan to be able to accommodate that. But when we do, we're able to sit down and give a justification for doing that. We're under the same task, Mr. Higgins, in that, you know, it can be a brand-new assembly in two years and they may sit down with a, with a new mayor and write a new six-year plan. Those are things that are out of our control. But if we establish the policy that we've got a six-year plan in place, even they will be held a bit to maintaining that and the justification for the expenditures. And that's all we're really talking about. And, you know, by the same token, I think that would be extremely helpful when you go to Juno soliciting funds, if you're able to lay out to them the reason that you're looking for the funding. I mean, you've got reasons for it, it's not just asking for more money. I think it's an incredibly good tool. And by the same token, you know, I would tell you about our six-year plan. Are we as an assembly ecstatic with what we've got? No, but we fought really hard to get where we are and we're going to continue to challenge to try to flesh ours out and make it better than what we have. But, you know, it, it's just honestly an encouragement to provide a tool that we really feel is going to be of extreme benefit to you and to us as well. As Mr. Starr said, we honestly, as a body, would have no problem going out and lobbying for you as long as we have clear understanding of what it is we're lobbying for and why we are. You know, the reality is, we've had some, I think, some probably misunderstandings amongst us as a body. We totally respect the board, the school board. You're elected to do a really tough job. We get assigned the same task. And sometimes it's surprising and when I have to tell my constituents, I really don't have the ability to avoid, to ignore municipal code. You know, I can do everything I can for you, but I've got to do it within the confines of what I'm allowed to do. So I think a meeting like this is incredibly helpful to all of us to understand that it's not us against you. We want us all to be out there fighting the same battle for the kids in this community.
Since we caught up on our list, I'm going to chime in a few words. And that is, I guess, sort of an echo of what you just heard. Nobody who's been involved with government for any length of time believes that standards and goals don't shift. They're, they're mutable depending upon circumstances and priorities. But you frankly, But you frankly scared me a little bit with your introductory comment there, Mr. Higgins, because you said, we're going to design the plan and then we'll figure out the cost. My belief is that you can't come up with a design unless you have a rough idea of what your resources will be to come up with a realistic design. I know that the sheet with the projections out is a guess, a best guess. Ms. Stokesbury drummed it into my head for years. Don't take that figure literally, but you have to look out when you set the parameters for contract negotiations. Harriet and I went through a very, very hellish, difficult time with future strikes because we looked out at what we were anticipating. When you plan your technology goals, you can make logical assumptions. I take exception to say it's impossible to know what you're going to get. You can make an educated guess. You may be wrong, but you can give within a certain flux period a delta. You can give a guess of what you're going to get. And I think it provides a real sense of reassurance to this body and the public if you say, we have a goal here, we're trying to get that way, we can't quite do what we ideally would like to do because of our expectation that resources are going to be not quite there. If you give us a little more, we could go a little further, but you have to have this. I agree with Mr. Starr. You have to. So, Mr. Higgins?
Well, I recall Mr. Starr saying, you know, if you could tell us what you would get for the money for career technology, then I can go out and I'll, you know, support it. I think we have to look and say, what are the options out there if we had additional money, if we don't have additional money? And we have to lay out parameters and not limit ourselves on what we're going to end up doing and then deciding whether or not we want to take money from other parts of budgets. So I think you start with at least defining what it is that would benefit the kids, and then what level you want to go with before you, obviously, the level you're going to go at is based upon the funding. But I do believe that you have to look at it and say, evaluate the benefits to the students, where's going to, how is going to, what are the options or that would be there? And then you make a case and you say, okay, if we had the additional funding, we're going to have a career technology expansion at West Bromwich, which is something like that. If we have the additional funding, these are the options that we do. I'm not going to start with a premise that says we're basing upon, as we said, the budget we have today, and that would be it. But I don't see it where we're trying to advocate, we're going to come out with a budget that's going to be unreasonable. We're just going to have to decide what are the benefits at that point in time based upon the options. Isn't that, that's what we're talking about. I'm not, I don't see it in the same light that you just presented it, Associate. I'm not saying that we're entering this with the idea of not recognizing financial strengths we have.
All right. With that, the next item on our agenda is the Budget Advisory Commission presentation, and I see that you have your eyes.
Hello.
Hi.
Want to just sit here?
Um, yeah, or come up. Come up with a hot season bill. Thank you. And I will call you Mr. Starr.
Yeah. Well, welcome, everyone. We have been hard at work over the past year in the Budget Advisory Commission. Did any of everyone get, I know the school board members have this, did Assembly members get a copy of this?
I have not seen it, no.
Not, okay. I sent it to Mr. Starr. I didn't, I'm not running today's work session, so I didn't print it.
Well, Matt, would you like to manage my copies? Or is that your only copy?
It's mine. I'll get you copies after.
All right.
Describe it. I will describe it and highlights.
Okay.
So a little bit of background. The Budget Advisory Commission has now combined with the School Budget Advisory Commission, as you all are aware. And so this was the first year we had to look at both budgets. There are some members that came over from the prior School Budget Advisory Commission and some that were just looking at the Muni side. So we had some members with experience at looking at the school budget and I think a majority that did not. So we learned some things in the process of looking at this over the first year. And I think the biggest takeaway that we took was the way the budget process, just the calendar that it's actually laid out at the school district. And we see some real issues, mainly it's just such a compressed timeline. What's really nice about, on the Muni side, is we have a full three months or so, two or three months, to really go department by department and interview folks and really dig in and get a good grasp of what's going on. Literally, the school budget, or on the school side, we have a week and a half. I mean, the budget book is given to us, and there's really, there was a week and a half to try to come up with something to give to the school board before they had time to act on it. Now, part of that is a result that this was our first year looking at it as a combined body. And what we've realized and are changing is that it's not just that week and a half that we came up with. And we will be continuing to review things throughout the calendar year. And we've already come up with a bit of an action plan that talks to that. And we'll be looking at things like, first of all, as a Budget Advisory Commission, we work for you guys. We work for both boards and the superintendent and the mayor. The charter has changed to where we can report literally to any of those four entities. That's what's written in code now. So we intend, our intention is to have more interaction with all of you and to listen to what you guys want us to dig into rather than maybe just coming up with things on our own. I mean, there'll still be some of that, but we really do want to be here to serve you guys. That's why we're here. And on the school budget side, we, over the next year, we will be focusing on some specific areas and specific projects, and I'll just list some of them off, but particularly some federal programs, what's the mandate behind them, and just digging into some federal programs. Activities at the school district, general efficiency and efficiency where capacity is an issue that we highlighted in our report. It looks to us that maybe we're a little, have more capacity in the elementary school side right now than we probably need, and is there a way to better utilize that space? Could we repurpose it for something else? And then instructional support division is another one that's been mentioned. So as far, getting back to the process, the calendar year, some of our members have met with Chad and to discuss some ideas there of what could be done. One of the things, a bit of history that I found out that one of the reasons that it is more compressed now than it was in the past years is that, is the election cycle. So because of the April elections, that backed up the whole process another 30 days from where it used to be at least. So I think the, I think the date is March 1st instead of, or beginning of March instead of the beginning of April, like it used to be. So unless you want to change the election cycle.
Change should one.
Yeah. So, you know, seriously, that's a topic on the table.
Do you mind if I?
Yes, please, you can.
Having been involved in the school board since 1993, '94, and April elections have been since then, and budget development at the school district seems to begin around September, and it's pretty much a continuous process. There were years in my time in the Associate's on the school board where we had the name tags for the Budget Advisory Commission members out in front of us and several tables set up, and maybe two would show up. I'm really grateful that your group is participating, but I think there's a lot more opportunity to participate other than just when that book comes out. Because the budget development process starts way, 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 way out in advance, and in my, my observation, it actually takes longer than municipal budget development does. And because it doesn't have to be finalized until way after the elections, and yeah, there's an election cycle in the middle of it. Yeah, we have some calendar issues. The fact that the city is on a July 1st, excuse me, on a January 1 to June 31 calendar, and the school district is July 1 to June 30th, does create some issues there. And I think we have looked at that in the past, but there was never any decision made on who was going to change and if anybody was going to change. But I appreciate that your group is rolling their sleeves up and getting into it because we didn't have enough of that in the past. And one of the other things that I want to mention that we have, going in my time on the school board, were the budget review committees that met periodically, that started about '95 or '96. I think they met for a couple of years in a row and came up with excellent recommendations. 200 people, in the neighborhood of 200 people were involved, and that hasn't happened in quite some time, but, and I don't know how practical that would be in this day and age, but there's always that way of looking at it, and that doesn't require waiting for that book to come out and having a week and a half to review it. So that's my two cents at this point.
Mr. Friedman?
Well, I can wait till the reports.
Yeah, and to your point, like I said, this was our first year as a combined entity looking at this. So again, we learned some things. We will be participating throughout the year in the future. The only other thing I'd like to just highlight is shared services. I know it's been a hot topic, and we've been in talks constantly, even last night at the school board meeting, but the IT data center is just one example of that. But I really would, I think everyone is in agreement that it is an area that needs to be addressed and one that I still believe there are some real cost savings out there to be had. And I guess, not from an independent third party, looking out from the taxpayers' perspective, I think it's really important to try to come to a real solution in that area. And, you know, we can talk about it, but until we actually act upon it, I don't think it really becomes a reality. And so talking is one step, but let's find some real projects. And the data center is, you know, water under the bridge at this point. But, you know, when a body, like the school board last night, you had it in front of you, in my opinion, you didn't have real numbers in front of you. You didn't have a true cost analysis between the two options. And so I just, I guess my caution would be just to, let's spend some time looking at these kinds of opportunities in more detail in the future. Can you find us some more?
We have some.
So do we, how do we dialogue on them?
So, yeah, I think that's the question, is how do we dialogue on them? Because I think we have some, and even, we talked at our early meeting last night about my request to the administration, the audit committee, is us being able to kind of buy audit time from you guys, that I'd like that before the end of this year, the end of our year, which is June 30th, so that's set for next year in the audit cycle. We're still, looking at Mr. Birch, we're still waiting for the Muni to respond on libraries. I mean, we figured out how to do that, now the city's kind of having to make their decision on their side. And then, I mean, everyone here, I think, has talked about ideas, but I think you hit it right on the head, which is, and you have two Jennifer's, how do you make that next forward? And how do you talk about the how you get it done? And then both bodies have to make a decision. And sometimes there's going to be disagreement at that level, but I think that's okay. But I think it's the how.
And we did, if you recall, have a meeting, joint meeting, and the mayor suggested forming a committee, and frankly, I didn't hear anything else, and I haven't taken the charge to do that. We all get so busy with life, I guess is my only defense. But if there is some interested group of people on both bodies, none at all reverse support on that. And Mr. Friedman's been in line, and I, we jumped in.
That's okay, because I'll transition right smoothly, because one of my concerns when the municipality combined the two committees was that the single budget commission was going to just have too much to do, and it was going to be unwieldy. But the benefit of that is, I think, one of the benefits is with the shared services idea, if we're going to find places where we have overlap, the best people to find it are people who are scrutinizing both budgets. And I know the Assembly looks at our budget, but I don't think they have the time or the desire to look in depth the way the commission would be looking. And I know I don't look at your budget at all, so, I mean, that's where we're going to find, that's where we're going to find some of these things. And I very much appreciate the new focus of the commission in terms of trying to make it a year-round task. Taking, you know, you can really talk to student nutrition in the summer when some of the people are less busy. You can really get into some of the details of some of these budget areas and give us the advice in September and October when it'll be most useful. And, well, I won't be there, but I think it will be, I would be looking forward to that quite a lot because I think it'll be useful. So I appreciate the new way of looking at it and just the extra help we'll be getting.
Mr. Hall?
I just wanted to say, I had a meeting with the mayor, I think, two or three weeks ago, and brought this, I had a list of things I want to talk about. One of them was this, because there is an interest on the part of some of our staff in having that committee, or if it's Assembly and school board, however that works, but I wanted to assure him that that's still of interest. And I think what Mr. Friedman said is, I think, getting on a year-round where you have some topics that you do want to interview departments, or really, like you do. And I've read your annual reports, that I think you all do an excellent job on the questions that you ask the departments and recommendation strengths, as well as areas that you think could be looked at differently. I think that could be hugely beneficial to the district too. So I really think that now that we get, if we get through this, then I think setting up an annual kind of cycle, we can then assist you getting hooked up with the right people. But our, we've got people on staff that really do want to do the joint discussions.
Mr. Hall, when you were talking with the mayor, was there any talk about structure and how to do that?
No, we didn't get into that. I just wanted to reassure him, because we hadn't talked since that meeting, and that was my question, and I just wanted to tell him again that we were interested, and the board certainly has expressed interest also, so how that goes.
At that time, at that meeting, if I recall, it was not just school board assembly, it was a real talk about having.
Right, we had some of my K staff, and my cabinet and Chad are very definitely, and we thought those would, I think we even said that, those would be the two people. So we're just, I know Lucinda and her crew are all up to here probably with their implementation on the.
Time.
Yeah, and the time and all that, to crown this. So, but I just wanted you to know, we are not stepping back from that commitment, that's all.
All right. Mr. Starr?
Well, I think to that end, what we learned, and again, I had quite a bit of interaction with Budget Finance Chair for the Assembly side of things, where there was specific mandates to go out and research and decide. There was also a two-year now or three-year almost trending to where, from our budget review process, they broke into smaller groups and had departmental interviews and tendered back white paper summaries that tied in nicely to our budget goals, our fiscal plan, and the wherewithal. So I would want to encourage again whoever's BAC chair to reach out for those departmental reviews as one of the ways to get into the budget basics. And so that requires a commitment by the administration that it's okay for a team of two or three people to meet up with your IT directors, much like they did with DHSS. Almost unfettered and unrestricted. I went to a number of those BAC meetings and sat there without directive speak, and they, by and large, the committee did a great job of getting along, of integrating the mission statement, and then sort of moving to a product that we could use. I think both bodies have an avenue here that's really helpful because it sort of takes the politics out of it by saying, can you go get me some information as it relates to this in areas where it may be driven by friction ahead of time. I asked the question about, do you have any other ideas? And I still have my pictures of my road graders and my vacuum sweepers for the parking lots that I rudely put in front of the body last year. So, you know, I'm not sure they'll come out again, but I would want to see also areas where we've tried it to get that. where we've tried it to get that feedback, you know, basic management says implemented, tried, and then report how it's doing. Where can we get a report? Maybe Andy's group can tell us how we did with the experiment on the snow clearing topic. I thought we had five core areas that tried shared services, or you guys referred to somebody.
We outsourced some of the snow, which is shared, and, well, the snow's not gone yet, so.
Well, you know, it's good here and bad. So Andy, I guess, can you give us a summary back to this body, how that outsourcing on ASD went?
Yeah, and we're going to get, I'm looking at Ms. Rappin', but.
We're going to have a word in June, too.
Yeah, and then, but you can go to Andy's.
That's, I mean, that's just here, his perspective. Thank you, Andy, for doing your work.
Sure.
If I could also chime in, you know, there's, I sort of get the sense that the implication might be that we haven't tried as an administration, and there's only so many times you hit your head against the wall and you get the same answer. So between ERP, SAP, our, now SAP, Kronos, a timekeeping system, the data center, and these are all things that are internal, no impact to services to citizens. And the answer was no, ultimately. So, you know, yeah, we can continue to try, but it needs to be a little bit more focused on success as opposed to why it won't work, so.
And can I, and I think maybe this is going back to Mr. Stars, because, you know, I already feel the tension going up in the room, and I think those of us who want to make this work truly do, is maybe going back to Mr. Stars, and maybe this is the role of the BAC, is to interview both sides and let's take the lessons learned. Instead of being bitter about a whole bunch of stuff that didn't happen, and that's not saying anyone is, but I think it's easy to do that. I lose things at work every day, is to set them aside, figure out the lessons learned, and then how do we move forward? And so maybe, to, you know, I'll look at Andy, but maybe that's another place on lessons learned, on things that didn't work. And almost like an audit, you know, why didn't it work on either side? Because I think either side would probably have different perspectives, and neither one is good or bad, but let's learn from that to figure out how we do it better next time.
Could I respond to that? Yeah, pretty good. And I feel that's exactly the role that we play in this data center. Over the last week, I've spent a good amount of hours talking to Lucinda, Lance, Chad, Jane, you guys on the data center, trying to get collected information from both sides and come up with a true, okay, what is the real cost of either option? And I still, that's why last night, my mission in going to testify before your board was really, let's just delay it 30 days and take, give us a little bit more time, because it wasn't quite enough time to come up with a good analysis. And I felt like we were right there, and like, and Mr. Higgins, your testimony last night was right on. You feel, you felt like there should have been another third option presented, and I did, too. And I don't think we had enough time to get to that third option.
Okay. Ms. Drummond?
Thank you. I'm glad the superintendent has met with the mayor. I think there's a small elephant in the room that the mayor has not been here today, and he's got this mayor's education summit thing going on in the background. And I'm really interested to know if that will have any impact on the budget that we're talking about here. And there is no answer. And I'm also glad that Ms. Prasas stood up and said that those various implementations have no impact on the public, which is absolutely untrue. There is a series of dominoes that fall whenever things happen here, and some of us have been involved with the fact that the Kronos implementation has prevented the city's treasury department or payroll department from doing the election workers' payroll. And that, the clerk's office is fully aware of the intense implications of that. We nearly lost a whole bunch of valued elections workers because of Kronos implementation. So it's not true that those things are internal and don't affect the public. There's a lot of issues out there about the various implementations and how they're affecting the systems throughout this organization. And that's it.
Mr. Birch?
I guess the, in the review of the Budget Advisory Commission recommendation, and I appreciate the report, I think it's good to identify kind of range of, as we do personally, if there's budget impacts. In other words, if you have a reduction in revenue, what do you do to, you know, preserve your core competencies, your core capabilities and responsibilities? How do you roll that back? And I think it's also helpful to look back and see where your successes are. And I don't know how the school board and administration review, you know, look at the move from the bar to bond base, you know, but I assume there is some significant cost savings and some, you know, I don't know what those numbers are, but sometimes it's helpful to kind of look at your successes. And I'm sure there's a point in time when nobody could imagine relocating out of, you know, the DAR office location, you've been going there for a number of years, and you say, gee, I can't imagine moving out of this. But it'd be helpful to understand what sort of cost savings were generated by things like that, so you can kind of stand back. And I think the Budget Advisory Commission has kind of an external perspective, hopefully, to bring to the table and identify, well, how, you know, things like contracting out, I mean, every year that I've been on the assembly, we've talked about that, you know, the snow removals, one, but there's a range of issues out there where there's some potential savings could be realized. And I think that's a duty that we all collectively, as elected folks, have to our constituencies, to make sure we wrung out any of the savings and potentials that are, you know, the reductions in operating costs that could be gained or realized by looking at those. And I think that's where I'm very hopeful for what you're able to do with this, your kind of my effect.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to follow up on what Mr. Birch said, but also on the IT center, because I've been equally confused by it in the discussions. And I would love to have the Budget Advisory Commission follow through and see if you can sort through the two administrations and give us a white paper on that, so we can understand. I also, I'm back to my drum here, really, this whole conversation, at least what I've found in the last four and a half years, or however long I've been doing this, is that we're not going to do anything if we keep piecemealing it, and if we don't bring it to an overall global policy level. And then you get the tit for tat. And I think, I really do feel, after this election, I hope the two bodies, the mayor and the new superintendent, or however we structure it, actually form a group of concerned folks, and we develop a criteria and a policy on how we go forward in our shared services, because it depends on labor negotiations, it depends, you know, I made the mistake too, five years ago, bringing up the word managed competition, but it does, you know, whichever unit does it most efficiently and effectively, we need to look at it, and we need to look at it in a policy level and go and do it.
Ms. Guest, and then maybe we should move to our main topic here.
Yeah, it's my meters. Just a couple of things, a couple of things I won't talk about, we can talk about offline. One is to respond to Ms. Drummond. The mayor and Cheryl leading on the education summit, we had that conversation, probably one of our first meetings last year about the summit, of, you know, you're going to come with conclusions right before our budget. And my understanding, and the mayor's office has been great to work with regarding the summit, is we're talking about big changes and implementation over time. And I, so I trust that that will come out of June. That's been in alignment with it all. So I'm not concerned at all about those immediate budget impacts. We had those conversations. The other, I had forgotten to mention earlier, June, our management audit, the district for the first time, actually went out to audit our backend and our services and our ratios, and Chad and Jane and the auditors came up, and they were impressive, impressive folks. And part of it was the budget process and a whole bunch of other things. So we're really hoping that when this audit comes back in June, it will also be a jumping off point about shared services and all the back non-classroom stuff that we can all look at. So we'll make sure that you all get a copy of that audit when it comes out and posted, but I'll send it out.
Thanks. All right, we've got about a half an hour left here, so let's talk about budget. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think, hopefully, you've all been able to read the memo that you got when it was introduced. I just had Barbara pass out the budget basics book. This was started years ago, it's a request actually, of some of the assembly members, that our staff has tried to summarize the key elements. For this year, we did put in the school board's vision and news mission statement and the performance measures, because as Ms. Guest was talking about, this is the first time we've had those, and we thought those would be important. Because administratively, when we brought the budget to the board in January, we tried very hard to, in our beginnings of this value-based budgeting process, really tried to keep all those in mind as we made the reductions that we had to do. So with that said, in the limited amount of time, I think we'd be better off if you ask us questions. And I've got, you know, my key staff here, because I want to try and get information to you. I believe, Mr. Starr, that you're going to get the answers to your questions by the end of the day, I believe. Chad told me, I checked this one.
So some of the clerks, I guess.
Okay, so we'll get them. That way, those will be distributed. Mr. Birch, I got yours from last time. So I think that would probably be the best use of this time, is to just try and respond to questions.
All right. And Mr. Starr is the first one to indicate you want to talk.
Well, I've tried to have our administrative speak on the MOA budget, speak about a different word than budget cuts, because I think the idea for me is that if you're really cutting the budget, you're trying to bring your expenses in line with what you're sort of in your known deals are. And so it's not to do that, it's sort of change the speed that we've all been doing. It's like, cutting the budget, cutting the budget, which turns into public testimony that says, don't cut my program, don't cut my program. What I'm challenged by is when those dialogues happen at the public testimony, which I valued listening to those folks that may come and talk to us on Tuesday night. I have a couple of statements in that. Last year, I challenged, I think it was a service high principal came up and said, don't cut my budget, I can't live with those budget cuts, and went through this nicely presented deal, but when you look at his budget, it went up $2.5 million or in that regard. So I'm challenged by, what were the targets? You know, how did you say, this is what we're going to bring our spending in our, what were they? What were the goals that you said, this can go, that cannot go? How did you get there?
We asked every department to use a matrix that was developed, trying to use the board goals, strategic initiatives that they had adopted. And then review every program, every position in their particular area of expertise, and then to rank them according to any evaluation data that we'd gotten back. In some cases, we had some evaluation data, and other things, it was based on mandates that we knew we had to provide the service, and is this the best way to provide the service? And then come to us with a prioritized list within target and prioritized reductions, or if they felt they needed to recommend in addition to, in order to meet the need, then what would you reduce elsewhere within your span of control?
How deep does that go? Because, you know, the intermediate curriculum development director says perhaps, if that's your person that advises on middle school curriculum costing, does it go deeper? Does it go right down to the principal, to the classroom? How deep do you go in those program analyses?
We started with my direct reports. There are six people that report directly to me, and they each obviously have departments within them. The instructional division, in this case, is the largest, as it should be. And then Ed met with the executive directors of his division, and the charge there was to do, as I said, but then they needed to get down in, talking to the principals, working through that, trying to analyze all the things. And when you sift out the number of people and the benefits, that's 88, 89% across the blue district, that's our mostly personnel. And so there's a little discretionary beyond that. But they had to look at every program and say, is this something that really enhances student achievement? Is this something that is making a difference at the middle school level in this case? When you take the middle school seventh period day versus the old junior high school model, that was a good example. And I know that they spent a lot of time looking at that, because it is an extra cost. When we adopted the middle school model, the board, excuse me, the board adopted the middle school model many years ago, I think these two folks were on the board. They, we've embraced that, we think it's making a difference in a whole range of ways, trying to put a number to it, why that's a better deal, and the customer service for the parents, the electives, opportunities for the young people versus what they used to have. Some of that's subjective, some of it's not, but they really looked at that, and the middle school principals spent a lot of time looking at what's within their division.
When you say inside their division, do they actually know that their teacher salary burden, their cost of labor has gone up 1.3 million, or do they get that specific?
They don't get into the costing of the contracts and benefits. That really is not what we've asked our.
Do they have situational awareness of it, though?
Oh, yeah, I think they're aware.
I mean, I hope so, we all do, but that's my point where I had a debate with somebody. It was not a debate I enjoyed having, because that sort of was confrontational to, you know, banter the witness at the podium, but that was where I was inquiring, when he says, don't cut this, don't cut that, don't cut that. Well, when it was specific to the example of this school, I wanted to know how deep it went. You answered my question in that regard, so thanks for that.
Ms. Drummond?
We had a chance, we had a chance to email back and forth about lower class sizes, which you guys were able to do in the four to six, four to six grade range, and I'm able to find that now. It just differed from what we got in the assembly informational packet, so it's fine. What was the determining cost of lowering the class size from 27.25 to, I guess it would be 25.25?
It was.
Well, in the informational packet that we got, with the ordinance on top and the connecting data, it showed grades four to six, class sizes increased from 27.25 to 28.25. But in the creating a high performing district, it shows that that's actually not the case. So I was able to find what you were talking about.
I believe the number, and where you can find it, if you're looking at that, page 18 in the budget basics book, is what changed after the amendments by the board.
Okay.
Yeah, or page one of attachments. Okay, but anyway, the number is 1.432 million. Two points two.
So what does that actually equate to? You lowered class size from what, to what, at what cost?
Okay, so.
Without me.
Yeah, so it was, I knew I should have brought the amendment, I had to look at it. It was about $3.2 million of a total, and it reduced the projected of 28.25 to 20.
That's just.
By two, down to, well, we're at 27 this year, so it's confusing, because they were, the administration was recommending it going up. So the cut back down is to 25.25 at, I'm looking at, at Chad's.
Your amendment was 2.6 million.
My amendment was three point, well, my amendment was larger than that, but the.
For classes four and five, it says it cost.
2.6, and then another 600, 3.2, because sixth grade was different.
Yeah, 668 for sixth.
And it went down to for fourth and fifth grade, 25.25, and for sixth grade, 26.25. It was projected to go up to 28.25, and it's currently at 27.25. So we're at 27.25. The budget coming in was moving it up to 28.25. The amendment, the 3.2 million, brought it down to 25.25.
So 3.2 million to decrease class sizes, each individual class size by three?
By three for fourth and fifth, and by two for sixth.
Compared to the recommended.
Compared to the recommended.
Compared to what's happening.
Correct. But, yeah, but it was the, is the amendment the recommended.
So, no, no, that's fine. So each individual grade has their own cost per pupil, per student, I should say, roughly. And there's obviously four to six, or sixth grade. Is it higher for, is it higher for high school?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah. And in your page five of your fiscal policies, it kind of sets out the people-teacher ratio. And those are averages, some are going to be lower and some are going to be higher. And Ed and I are working on a project about how do we decrease that variance, or at least that variance in.
that variance in core classes. Of course, if you have an orchestra or a choral class, those are okay to be 40 kids, but we don't want our English 10, 1 to be 38, because another class is 10. And so the management of how you decrease that variance in the range. But what happens is these class sizes are used to then allocate teachers, principals allocate those teachers according to their program.
Right. So then, would you say that as, Eric, you've been able to determine how much money it takes to lower class size by one student?
Oh, yeah, we can do that by grade. We have an estimate of how many third graders we would have and in how many schools. Because a lot of it is not, you know, it depends on how many kids are in each.
Sure.
A little bit. But, yeah, we can do that, and we did that during the budget process. But it's a bit by grade level versus by...
The only reason I asked was that in a previous conversation, I was confused because there was, there might have been the understanding that there wasn't an exact dollar figure saying, "This amount of money will lower class size in this group by one." And so I was confused as to that, but it sounds like there actually is that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that is real.
All right. That is my misunderstanding.
Just want to remind the body that we're only doing two things on Tuesday. Once is set the $10 amount of their budget, there's the appropriate local taxation. We can give them more money or less money, but it's up to them as to how it's spent. There's nothing we can do to add more elementary school counselors on the field. Because you both, both you, Eric and Debbie, you were both on the school board. You know, you're responsible for how the money's spent. Just remind the body, we're not a super school board. All we do is set the $10 amount. Could have people coming in and saying, "Please raise the budget, please lower the budget, I don't like this program, I don't like that program." Their avenue is the school board, because they set the policy and other money's spent. We just set the $10 amount. Thank you, Matt.
That reminder. Ms. Johnson?
On page 13, being kind of a typical kind of person. I have two questions. First of all, what's included in your district-wide non-departmental services? What is that?
Chad or Marie, do you want to answer? You heard the question?
All right. Generally speaking, in the district-wide account, what that provides for all the activity that reaches out throughout the whole district, but it doesn't make sense to spread those costs out into all the areas. So an example is the vacancy factor, or attrition to the district. We have a negative offset of just over $6 million, recognizing that we won't have all the positions filled all of the time. That's included in there. There is also indirect costs, which is an offset from the federal grants, the payments for the SROs that we pay back to the municipality, also for the taxes. That's also included in there. We have some payments for health insurance for retirees from the 70s and 80s, based on an agreement that was made back then that is still being paid out. Their life, or not life insurance, liability insurance, property insurance are other examples of all this. It's essentially just a lump of large costs that could be spread to every single building or every single employee. But for efficiencies, we group it together because it doesn't help show the true operating, necessarily show the true operating costs of each individual location.
But each department head is accountable for their own vacancy factor, like within their budget, or?
It's one centralized aspect. So departments don't have the ability to move funds out of their personnel budget because we know that the vacancy factor is owned centrally. So there's, if someone doesn't have, doesn't have access or doesn't have somebody in a position...
So they can't, they can't...
They can't move that to bicycle lines.
My other question is, just sort of looking at the picture and seeing, we have a general administration, operations and maintenance. Yeah, the schools, which is over 60%, do you look at your schools as a school site? And so is that a school site? Does that include the administration within the school? Or, I mean, how do you separate out? Is that just the teachers and the principal? I mean...
No. It's the focus of running that building.
So when you're talking about operations and maintenance, that, I'm confused. Because, so the school's operation and maintenance is in that 60%?
The school janitors are.
Yeah, but you put the building plan operators and then...
Utilities.
Utilities and all that.
But not facility maintenance.
Maintenance departments, not the electric...
Not the grounds.
Right, correct. Okay. And, okay, so then when we're looking at the other side of this picture, we're basically looking at what's out of the administration building. Would that be a way of looking at it? If you take out special education in schools, you're looking at the just basic school administration and non-school.
Non-school.
Well, you're going to see most of that in general administration and other support. And there is some administration, for instance, in the gifted ELL, Alaska Native Program, they're supervisors.
Right.
And the instructional support. So that's where, between general administration and those. But the administration, the school sites are all inclusive.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gray-Jackson?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. As Mr. Flynn mentioned earlier in the meeting, we received lots of, several emails from folks with concerns about that elementary school counselor. And I probably received one from the neighbors, nobody else did. How many elementary counselors are there right now? Just roughly. I mean, because six are being reduced. So I guess we reduce to part-time?
To part-time.
To part-time. And that goes, going back to Mr. Starr's question, kind of came from the principals, when they were looking at the trade-offs of their budget cuts. So those aren't eliminating a principal in a school, but it is going to a part-time. Right. And I'm focusing on the counselors because the emails that we received were quite compelling as to the need. So I guess my question to you is, if the Assembly can increase the total amount of the annual budget by $576,846 before we include it, can you tell us what you would do with that, additional funding?
I think it would be irresponsible to the body for me to do that, to be honest with you.
Okay, well, that's all I wanted to ask.
But, yeah. We got the same testimony and it, the value of the counselors didn't pass the board by. At the end of the day, we had, we did reinstitute and shift a lot of money, and those priorities went to the special education counselors, reinstituting the librarians, the graduation coaches, and the class size reduction from four through six. So it wasn't that we didn't think the counselors were important. I think the body thought they were extremely important, but at some point, you run out of the ability, ability to shift the...
And I'm sure you recognize the importance and how to make the decisions like you have. And you answered my question. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Mr. Tremblay?
Thank you. This goes back to the class size issue. I'm looking at the class size numbers in the Budget Basics book, on page 20 for high schools and the previous two pages for the other two divisions. The class size increase of one and a half at high school level saves $2.3 million. Back in our day, if we had a single number for increasing or reducing class size by one district-wide, that I seem to remember it was about $3 million. But that, it's been too long for me to remember the specific numbers.
I think she knows, K-12, we have that, I believe.
I'm sort of thinking that's what Mr. Tremblay was looking for, was a sort of a formula for that. But it's in here in the different levels. And it must be in high school, the teachers are more expensive, is that why it costs more?
Well, those are averages, but many of them have master's degrees because of...
That's what I'm saying. But those are, Marie does have that, I think. Okay. It's not, it's not critical now.
And that's also the number of classes or the number of MTEs that go.
Yeah. It's just, it's just an observation. Thank you.
Mr. Birch?
Again, looking at the metrics, if you will, evaluating success and, you know, obviously 100% graduation, where you start with a diploma or you passing the test, you know, their graduation test or thing. But is there a metric ever applied where you look at the cost per diploma? Or, you know, where you, I mean, is that, you know, where you say, you spend X number of dollars and divide it by the, and I know we've got a declining enrollment, and this is, you know, I don't recall ever seeing that, you know, I think we've got year-over-year decline in enrollment. But I'm just trying to, just trying to figure out, what's our product? Our product's a diploma, a kid with a good education, a capability to go out and earn a living and succeed in the world. So, and the cost is, you know, I just was curious, I'm an engineer, not a educator, but I was just kind of curious if there's a metric that is centered, that will be the cost per each diploma and looking back over time, looking forward, you know, just as a metric.
Yeah. You know what? It's, well, it's all numbers, so anything is doable. We haven't, the cost data really was on the back end because that's a little easier on the operational efficiency and common. And, you know, it's interesting, as we go forward, I think we're going to have to talk about if you're going to get to that hundreds percent, right? 60% of the kids are not that expensive to educate compared to, and Jennifer knows, I mean, when we have, you know, a high schooler that, you know, might be special ed and at risk and a whole bunch of other things, making sure that child gets through is going to be a lot more expensive. So, you know, the other thing is not just maybe the average, but the range of it. So, no, it's an interesting concept. We didn't have it at the board, but either...
On that point, Mr. Birch, I'd like to send you to page eight of the AO, where it says, there's a formula for basic need that includes 13 times the base student allocation for intensive need students. Now, I haven't done this math in a long time, but that's, that's about $74,000 per intensive need student. And these are kids who, that no child left behind was requiring, have diplomas.
No, no, no. These are our most disabled students who have the greatest need, and they're three times the base student allocation. The special ed, those are, Alaska State School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing students are all classified as intensive needs.
Is 13 times a misprint, then?
No, 13 times the base is, I'm sorry. 13 was what, in that three-year increase funding package we got from the legislature when Mike Cocker was the chair of that task force, they increased the base because the money coming from the state to educate these students with mandated services that were intensive needs was nowhere near what they cost. And so the legislature and the department, we worked together to get more funding for that. And that's, that's where that is. And that includes their transportation, that includes all their internships, services, nurses, all the services that go with those significantly intensive need students.
Okay, we've got about 10 minutes for the CIP. Has anybody got a burning question on it? I do have a quick comment since nobody's jumping in. I think this is better. I still think it's not realistic, but it shows basically, for those of you who don't have it, next year for $69 million bond, following year $87 million bond, following year $36 million bond. I don't know how to get it down, but that's my only option to make it so. It's roughly a month.
And just so folks kind of understand, understand some of the context, we revamped the way we evaluate schools this year, and we're about to finish a process that I really think is transformational. Because it's, it's based on need, whether education need or facility need, not on...
I do applaud that.
And that kind of went into this and what we asked the committee to do, which has got reinstituted, the new, formerly known as CRAC, now known as CIC Committee. Thank you, just the name. But what we asked them is, is a CIP based on need, based on what they really got, our facility needs and what they were going to hit. So now comes, so I agree with you, so now comes the really hard part of, if that really is our need, how do we get our hands around it? So progress, but not a final, so.
Just like with the budget projections, do you want us to project based on what we think we need or what we think we're going to get?
Both.
Yeah. Mr. Starr?
Well, and we shouldn't laugh about that comment because that's the element right there. You know, last year, you brought us $139 million worth of projects. But we're in the same league, and my angst at the podium when I was challenging you guys on that, particularly Chad, was first off, give us something a little bit more realistic, and then tie it into the fiscal plan. I hate to keep beating that same drum, but you know what debt service needs are going to be on $59 million worth of improvements. Why not? There's no harm in it for me to put it in next year's budget line on B14. So I appreciate the light bulbs going off, put it in there, and I'll help you lobby for it. I'll say that in public 100 times. If it forces that budget up and we have to rely on burdens of tax, there's the transparency. Your expectation aligns with those three documents, and that's really all that I'm trying to illustrate in there. You couldn't have done it last year with $139 million worth of projects, or I'm not sure what that number was. Because if you debt serviced that out with the expectation of moving that to a bond, your debt service would have really busted the budget. It's not so problematic with a $59 million request in that. We know that's going to be serviced by taxes or maybe direct grant from the state. We don't know exactly, but forecast it. Right now, you forecast debt service decreasing. Come on, that isn't, that isn't realistic. Match that document with the fiscal model and then bring it forth, and I can speak to it educatively. And then I can go back to my constituent base and they say, "Why is, why is the budget going up?" Well, because. And then again, this year, you don't even do it with the bond that's in front of the voters right now. You don't anticipate that that thing's going to pass. So what, you don't do it in the CTE budget increase? That's back to the point of, if you get to $13 million in CTE bond, if that's the number, I can't remember, but what are you going to do with it? That's, that's, that's a reverse argument.
Mr. Starr gave a better retort than I did.
Well, it's a lot of emotion, I just think it's right. I'll quit beating the drum if we can get a few milestones.
Ms. Tremblay?
Thank you. The year I got elected to the school board, 1994, this community passed a $174 million bond issue that built four, two middle schools, four elementary schools, and a whole slew of other things. Sometime in that next nine years, there was another bond of similar size and many others of different sizes in between that, some of which passed and some of which didn't. But the school board, in my nine years, and Miss Osiander's part of hers, built about half a billion dollars worth of facilities. We needed them, they were well-supported by the community, but it didn't take care of all of them. And I appreciate, Mr. Starr, noting that those are the needs and that's the way they should be presented. Also, not to forget how many millions in bonds have been paid off in the last couple of years without new bond issues going to effect. I wish we could have a historical on those kinds of things, going back 20 years, on the bond issues that have been passed, the buildings that have been built. We used to get a document on each building that showed floor plans, a historical, when it was built, what bond issues, what, what kind of money has been spent on it in the life of that school. That was a real, I still have my last copy of that book on my bookshelf, and I refer to it periodically, although it's sadly out of date. But that, that kind of document might be helpful to the Assembly, particularly in our districts, to understand the investment that has been made in the buildings that are in our districts. Thank you.
Are we going to finish in total? We have a whole agenda? Because you're still, nobody else is in queue. Mark, who you are. Mr. Birch?
I'm just castrated on the...
Okay, I'll give it to you. Okay. Mr. Tremblay?
I guess I just want to make a general comment. About a month ago or so, I was in the library on the weekend, and I ran across, and I wish I had his card, I actually talked to him. He's a, I'm not sure if he's a gifted or special needs counselor, working on a weekend, and I heard him on the phone, I overheard him on the phone calling several parents, reminding them that little guy he was supposed to be here working on a project. And this testimony, we do have people using our libraries on the weekends, our educational purposes, and good gentleman, I mean, he was absolutely working with probably half dozen students or better that were in the library somewhere working on the project. So we got a good school system going, and we just be alert to what we need and certainly try to help. Good education.
Ms. Johnson and Ms. Gray-Jackson?
That being said, Mr. Hall and I attended great news, they've changed, they've changed the name of it.
Yeah, the news break is whatever it is now.
Yes, and I've gone each year as an Assembly member. You have to bring a lot of Kleenex, but it does, it does prove that there's some fantastic teachers out of there and some wonderful students. And I don't know, did you get by without, with your time?
No, don't make it... No, don't make it.
They used to put a box of Kleenex on your table. They don't do that anymore?
Yeah. Budget cuts.
Ms. Gray-Jackson? Thank you, Madam Chair. Today is Mr. Freeman's last meeting with us, and I just want to publicly thank him for his service and services and thank him, and tell him that he's going to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. We probably would say the same thing to Ms. Kennedy, if it's Kennedy. Julie here. She's, she's in June now.
It's our nature to be transitory. Well, thank you very much. And with that, if there's no objections, we'll adjourn.